I'm going to call this Tuesday, May 14th, meeting to order of the Currituck Planning Board. At this time, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'm going to ask for any disqualifications on any of the cases in front of us today. All right, hearing none, we're moving on. We have a quorum. We have five members out of seven, so we do have a quorum. Moving on to number four, I'm going to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Moving on to number five, we're going to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from our April 9th meeting. If no one's noting any changes, I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Okay, seeing no old business, we're going to go ahead and move on to new business. First case before us is Planning Board 24-15, Brandon Reed, request for an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, use standards to allow sales and rentals of low-speed vehicles and golf carts subject to a zoning compliance permit. At this time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a pretty straightforward text amendment, and the purpose of it is to distinguish the sales and rentals of golf carts and low-speed vehicles from regular automobiles. Currently, you could sell golf carts or rent them as a retail use without getting a use permit or anything. It's not considered automobile sales, but low-speed vehicles, because they require license plates and DMV registration and that sort of thing, have been historically considered to be vehicles and lumped in with like a used car lot as the same use. So this is an attempt to distinguish those two things and allow the sale of low-speed vehicles and golf carts with just a zoning compliance permit instead of a use permit. And here you can see where we made the change in the summary use table, where we've added a Z slash U in general business. And this is just a list of the current specific standards for vehicle sales and services. And we have decided after reviewing these that these specific standards are still appropriate for the sale of low-speed vehicles. So we just kind of left those the same. This is just a list of the existing requirements to open that type of business. But at the end of this list, we did add letter I, which is where we said that use is limited to sales or rentals of low-speed vehicles, and golf carts require a zoning compliance permit in the general business zoning district. And that's pretty much the meat of it there. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Also, there's a slide missing here where the staff recommendation is not shown, so I'm just going to read it if that's okay.
Okay, sure.
And the policies I'm referring to are listed in your motion sheet. So staff recommends approval of the request as submitted and suggests the following consistency statement. The requested text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal 2, land use policy 2.2, land use goal 3, and economic development goal 1. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for staff?
Can you go over the change again, Jason?
Yeah. Yep. So currently, if you look in the permitted uses table, automobile sales are already allowed in heavy and light industrial and village centers with a zoning permit, but in general business, it required a use permit. And now it says Z slash U, depending on whether you're selling actual automobiles or you're selling golf carts and low-speed vehicles. So the golf carts and low-speed vehicles would be a zoning permit, which is like a site plan review that's administrative, and a use permit is required still for regular automobile sales.
Okay. They still have to be tagged the same to go on the road, or?
Yeah, there's no change to the laws about how they operate. It's just, in our ordinance, what kind of permit is required.
Now, is this for any type of commercial property there? Because I know we have now conditional, commercial, and, you know, general.
Well, conditional general business would be tied to whatever use they went through the process to get the conditional zoning for.
Okay, so whatever was listed.
But any just normal general business lot could do this now with a zoning permit, but only golf carts and low-speed vehicles.
Okay.
You guys are familiar with low-speed vehicles?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
On that line, can I ask you another question?
Yep.
And maybe this is getting ahead of the game here on it, and you were going to cover it anyways, but I know that they have to comply with that they can't go over the 35 mile per hour speed limit, correct?
I'm not fully aware of what the laws are. The applicant might know.
Correct.
Yep.
I think the problem is, is that some of them can't even get close to reaching 35 miles per hour. So I know that that kind of works two ways, you know? If it's going to be on the road as a cart, which I'm fine with, they got to be at least able to get up somewhere close to the speed limit. I've seen some pretty good backups waiting on a golf cart that was not getting over 15.
Right.
So, and I actually talked to one person one time, and they said, "Well, that's as fast to go, I had to pedal to the floor." So, I mean, that's certainly a concern I've seen in our area, my district. No.
Yeah. Yeah, but...
That's all DOT, right?
Yeah, or the police department, yeah. That really, separate from what kind of permit is required to sell them. That's basically what we're doing here. And I don't, like I say, I'm not an expert on what the laws are about operating them, but I can see how that would be an issue.
Kind of what goes on there is people get a golf cart, and when they want to digress the county ordinance, that's when they register it as a low-speed vehicle to navigate the county ordinance.
But, I mean, you're in law enforcement, so don't they have to be able to keep up with the speed limit without impeding traffic?
Once they get it, once they, they could, I guess, potentially be, there could be potentially a impeding traffic issue, but once they're registered as a low-speed vehicle, because a golf cart itself is not allowed over 20 mile an hour.
Really?
And then by law, and then you got the low-speed vehicle, which is the 35 rule, so, but they do that, that's how they navigate the county ordinance.
Okay.
Because you're not supposed to ride a golf cart on NC 12 or other places at all without it being registered as a low-speed vehicle, or you can't do it during certain times of the day.
Okay.
So the case before us is just on...
Sales.
Sales and rentals.
Right.
And the changes are being made in the general business classification.
Correct.
Sorry to interrupt.
Okay.
No, you're fine?
Yeah. So at this time, a zoning permit is needed in heavy industrial, and then the other, light industrial...
And village center.
And village center, which is kind of an odd, you know, that's a little area. And then, and we've added it to general business. So that's really the only changes that are being made. Okay.
Yep.
All right, any more questions for staff? All right, at this time, we can, if anyone has signed up to speak to the case, please come forward, state your name and address.
Oh, yeah, we'll hear from you, that's fine. You came all the way out here.
Really, it just comes down to nowadays, the manufacturers of, they're not really making golf carts like they, I mean, they're now specific for golf courses, and they're just making them now so that they can sell them as low-speed vehicles. And really, the difference between all of these is whether I put a plate on it or not, because it's the same vehicle. And so we're just looking to make it a little bit easier for us to do business rather than having to go through a, you know...
The use permit.
A use permit. That whole process every single time, if we want to change a business location or something like that, it's pretty complex. So this just kind of helps bring a little bit more clarity and a little bit easier to it, so.
And the big, I know it's kind of not related, but biggest qualifier when you're putting a plate is, it's got to have all of the essentials to meet.
Right, so when the manufacturers are making them nowadays, they're making them with all the requirements now, because it just makes more sense for them. And then it comes up to us, if I don't put a plate on it, I sell it as a golf cart. If I want to make it easier for the customer so they don't have to go register it and get it inspected and everything else, and I'm going to do it for the customer, then I sell it as a low-speed vehicle.
Okay.
Other than that, there's really no difference, because they're all made to be low-speed vehicles and meet that requirement nowadays.
And maybe you can speak to this since you're standing up here, but I think it's important to recognize the difference in the way the business operates, and especially the display. You know, if you have a used car lot, then there's cars parked everywhere, right up by the street.
Mm-hmm.
And that's probably not how it works for a business like his.
Mostly with ours, because, you know, you might have three or four of the different models that, you know, somebody might want, but nowadays, the, I mean, all of our cars ship up here from South Carolina or North Carolina or anywhere, you know, somewhere usually in the states, we can get them in a couple weeks. So more than likely, they'll come in, take a look, and say, "Oh, I like that model, and I want it in blue, and we'll have it here in a couple weeks," and we deliver it directly to the customer's house. It doesn't usually come to the...
So they're not getting inventory write-off a lot?
No.
It's just a sample, basically.
Exactly.
Okay.
And their current business is?
NC Beach Buggies.
Okay.
Brandon, where's your business located?
We're at 8295 Carrottock Highway, right where there's the, it's like a strip mall or a strip like industrial.
Right there by Gunshack and all.
Right over by the H2O, the water park.
All right, got you.
We're near there.
Yeah. Okay. Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any discussion between board members at this time, or any more questions for Jason? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and open the floor for a motion in this case.
I'll make a motion to approve PB 24-15, Brandon Reed, Low-Speed Vehicles Text Amendment because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, UDO, including land use goal 2, land use policy 2.2, land use goal 3, and economic development goal 1.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Okay, moving on to new business, item number two. Planning Board 24-09, Howard Land Development, Inc., request for conventional rezoning of 26.78 acres from agricultural, general business, and single-family residential mainland districts to single-family residential mainland and general business districts. The parcels are located in Grandy, Tax Map 94, Parcels 168, 161B, and 161C, Poplar Branch Township. At this time, we'll hear from staff.
All right, so this rezoning request consists of these three parcels you see here. They stretch from Carrottock Highway to Poplar Branch Road. Here you can see this is the current zoning configuration. There's a large portion of it is agriculture, some general business out by the highway, and a few questionable slivers of single-family mainland. Not sure how they ended up like that.
Oh, yeah, just a little one.
Yeah.
Go back to that.
Yeah.
I didn't, I, okay, that little corner there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
There's another one in the middle parcel.
Yeah.
A small one.
Yeah, right on the wall.
Here is the proposed zoning layout for the request. You can see that the gray long dash lines are the current zoning. That portion by the highway is all currently zoned general business, with the majority of what's behind towards Poplar Branch Road being agriculture. And the request shows that they are maintaining, and I don't have my mouse, so I can't point at it, but that square out by the highway is going to stay general business. It's already currently zoned to that, and the entirety of the rest of it would be single-family mainland. And here is the 2040 future land use map. You can see that it is majority G3, and then also G2, which are consistent with the request. So combined total acreage, 26.78, and the breakdown for the requested zoning districts will be 23.03 acres of single-family mainland, and the rest being 3.75 acres of general business out by Carrottock Highway. And the purpose would be to increase the allowable density of a future subdivision, and the result of this would take the allowable number of lots from approximately seven to approximately 20. During the community meeting, the overarching concerns were drainage and stormwater, and so just wanted to mention that there is Grandy Ditch, which is a major drainage feature that runs through the middle of the proposed subdivision, and that is also connected to other major drainage features, such as Outlaw Ditch, the Steeplechase Outlets, and the Waterview Shores subdivision. And just wanted, as a reminder, to put in here that a conventional rezoning does not include any conditions or conceptual development plans, so this is not a conditional rezoning, it's just straight rezoning. The request is consistent with the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan. Again, it's in G2 and G3. G2 transect is intended for medium-density residential developments and neighborhood-scale commercial nodes, which is basically exactly what they're asking for. And then G3 allows for even higher densities and more intense commercial uses. And the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies and action statements of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal 1, to encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for their location; policy 1.1, to foster growth and development while maintaining the distinctive natural environment; policy 1.2, from lower Currituck, new development and redevelopment should be properly planned so as not to adversely impact the character of the area; lower Currituck land use policy 1.4, to recognize community desire for additional neighborhood levels, services, and retail and dining; Grandy policy 4.1, plan for continued growth as a community center; and Grandy policy 4.2, to encourage clustered housing developments, plan for buffering to transition from service areas to more rural and agricultural surrounding areas. Staff recommends approval because it is in conformance with the general purpose and intent of the Unified Development Ordinance, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
As far as the community's concerned at the meeting, what was the outcome of the drainage? Because I know during certain storms, there is an issue with drainage in that area.
Are you asking me what the outcome was?
When it was discussed at a meeting, was it the community that was concerned about the drainage, or?
Yeah, there were, I guess there were folks from several communities that showed up in the meeting. Yeah. Yeah, he can...
Okay.
Yeah, but basically Steeplechase and, what's that, Waterview Shores.
And then the two, the pretty small cul-de-sac.
Sunny Lane and Betsy Court and all that.
Because I know there's an issue right there in that area sometimes.
Right.
In storms.
Although its outlets come through there.
Through that.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Will they be septic sewer?
You want to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's let him.
I'm sorry.
They are going to be septic, and I believe he told me just a minute ago that they've already been to the health department to evaluate the lot, but I'll let him...
Yeah, okay, just go ahead and state your name and address for the record, okay?
Jason Mazel with the Timmins Group, here on behalf of Mr. C. Howard, Howard Land Development, 1805 West City Drive, Elizabeth City. So, yeah, when they were going through their due diligence back in the fall, we actually went out, did a site evaluation of the property, looked at the downstream drainage, actually talked to the downstream neighbors down towards Outlaw Ditch Inn, talked to DOT, because there is some DOT drainage that drains through this property through the existing ditches, trying to get a sense of what all came through here. Some of you may be aware that the county is going through the process right now of writing a new drainage ordinance, and these downstream-upstream modeling is going to be a concern, and it's going to have to be something that's integrated into the design. It's something we're used to, we do it in neighboring counties. We're very familiar with that process and what that entails, so we've already kind of looked at those elements. It's kind of prepare for what the development ultimately will yield. During the community meeting, some of the neighbors, I think it's Betsy Lane, I think was the one, that they've got some internal flooding in their neighborhood, I think just from not having drainage in that neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Not sure what storm events, they've seen some flooding in there, but it has more to do with them not having an outlet. The culvert under the, under Poplar Branch Road that kind of connects over to Waterview Shores, it's almost non-functioning. I'm not even sure why DOT even put it in, to be honest. Like I said, it's trying to push water up hills to a certain extent. Most of the drainage from the highway and on-site and the back parts of those subdivisions drains towards the north, towards Outlaw Ditch. So we've been talking with those residents to get a sense of what they've seen, so that when we do our modeling, we can make sure it kind of mimics what those storm events have done. It's always good to get that historical information to make sure your model is giving you good data back. Again, your ordinance has teeth to it, and if it's properly applied, this or any other development should address the public welfare and concerns. From the standpoint of what's proposed, it's really a density. SFM versus ag, it's still single-family, single-family residents are allowed in both. In some cases, some of the uses allowed in SFM are probably more compatible with what's in the neighboring zones. Water's not a problem, we've got great pressure in the area. The schools in this part of the county, you're looking at Griggs Elementary, they're not over capacity. I think middle and high school are still, what, right around 85% or maybe a little less. We have walked the property with the health department, we did several boardings throughout the property to see both the good and the bad. We went to the best part of the site, we went to the worst part of the site, we went to the lowest site where there was organic matter, that type of thing, it was still very sandy soil here. The health department had no problem.
Did it perk?
Yes.
Did it perk?
Yes. The health department has no problem doing evaluations for 25,000 square foot lots.
Okay.
At the end of the day, the property will only dimensionally allow so many lots. Probably 20 is the most you could get out of this, when you set aside the 40% open space, and you figure another 10 to 15% for your right-ofways. And this is an oddly configured lot, or real lot, so 20 units is about all you're going to get out of this, even though I think density-wise might would allow upwards of 22, you can't physically fit it there, even at 25,000 square foot.
Yeah.
I have.
Yeah, let's go back to the first map, Jason.
Yeah.
That one right there, the nice colored one, yeah, that's, yeah, that one's a little easier to read, and... Juanita, you said you had a question?
I do. Here in Jason's notes, it said, "Beware that a large portion of the project has Portsmouth soil, which are unsuitable for building foundations."
Yeah, that came from the technical review committee comments. I just put it in there just for information, but like he said, he's been to the health department, and then they said it was fine, so.
And we've, well, we've had a...
As septic.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said building foundations, yes.
And that's something that's more of an indicator for building permit time, so that the inspection department knows whether to, you know, promote a geotech report or something of that nature for foundation design. As far as the site itself, we've had the Corps of Engineers out, and the entire site has been signed off as non-jurisdictional, so there are no wetlands on the site. So all in all, very good evaluations, both by the Corps and the health department. As I said, the soils are going to be, for foundation purposes, you could dig a hole here and be fine, you could dig a hole there and it not be. That's something that the building inspections, and I know Mr. Nunes is here, he could probably speak better to that than I can, but that's something they're going to evaluate on a site-by-site basis.
And that comes at the time of building permit.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's usually something that can be fixed if there's an issue.
Yes.
Just compaction or adding materials or whatever.
Riprap.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, any more questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, any discussions between staff, I mean, to staff or between board members?
I'd just like to make a comment. Having been in business in Grandy many years ago, I always felt that it was a beautiful part of the county, and it has never had the opportunity to benefit like some of the other areas, such as Moyoc and so on. And I think if this goes at least a little ways towards opening it up to businesses, to businesses for housing, and I think it's a good thing, and it ought to be encouraged and look forward to its success.
Yeah, I think a lot of things with Grandy, you don't see a lot of what's going on. You know, we go right down the corridor with Food Lion and Royal Farms, and you don't really see what's back into that area, you know? And that's really taking on a nice look. So, okay, if we're done with discussion, I'm going to open the floor for a motion.
Sir?
I move to approve PB 24-09, Howard Land Development Zoning Map Amendment, because the request is consistent with Imagine Currituck Land Use Plan Goal 1, lower Currituck Policies 1.1, 1.2, and 1.4, and Grandy Policies, I think it's supposed to say policies, 4.1 and 4.2. The request is reasonable and in the public interest, because it, A, would result in a logical and orderly development pattern, and two, would not conflict with the public interest, and is in harmony with the purposes and intent of this ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to number three. Planning Board 24-10, Donald B., and that's Howler, is that how it's pronounced?
Howler.
Howler, Howler, okay. Like, okay, I got it. Request for an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 1, General Standards, Chapter 2, Administration, Chapter 4, Use Standards, and Chapter 5, Development Standards, to require special use permits for certain developments in Corolla that include a traffic impact analysis and an engineered stormwater design, and to establish additional community compatibility standards countywide. Okay, at this time, we'll hear from staff.
I am presenting this in Jenny's absence, so forgive me if I stumble, or if you have a question I can't answer, but I know Mr. Howler is planning on coming up here and probably answer any questions that I cannot. But for now, I'll just go through the actual amendment itself. Here we are amending the applicability section for special use permits with an added condition that commercial, industrial, mixed-use, or multifamily development consisting of 30,000 square feet of floor area located in Corolla will need a special use permit. So, commercial, industrial, mixed-use, or multifamily of thirty thousand square feet of floor area, if located in Corolla, will now need a use permit.
Okay. So, that's the structures?
Correct.
Okay.
Floor area, yeah. Okay, here we're changing special use permit procedures. And this added language, special use permit applications for commercial, industrial, mixed-use, or multifamily development consisting of thirty thousand square feet of floor area or more located in Corolla shall include a traffic impact analysis prepared by a registered engineer that meets the standards of Section 5.9.3D Traffic Impact Analysis Required and a stormwater plan prepared by a registered engineer that meets the standards of Section 7.3 Stormwater Management. Guys have any questions about that part? This is all geared towards providing protection for neighboring residential uses from larger commercial developments or multifamily developments, and the impact that that sort of a development could have on the local traffic patterns and property values and that sort of thing.
Jason, what is the change from where we are right now to this? I mean, what is it, is it less, is it more than thirty thousand square feet right now?
There is no threshold now currently.
There is not?
This is all new for Corolla, for large developments in Corolla.
And that means like a residential structure with, that can hold, a rental structure that can hold multiple families in it, you're saying? Or is it just commercial?
No, this would apply if we go back to the other.
Square feet.
Period.
Yeah, it's, here is commercial, industrial, mixed-use, or multifamily development, and that's for requiring a use permit.
Okay.
And then this is specifically for those same use types needing a traffic impact analysis and a stormwater plan, which a stormwater plan would be triggered anyway with a development of that size, but it doesn't hurt to clarify it again here in this section.
But it's also adding.
But it's adding the traffic impact analysis where that wouldn't always be required.
I think it's a good thing.
I think it's a good thing, too.
All right, moving on, okay. Here we are in the use table again, and you can see under visitor accommodations, hotel or motel, that it now says zoning permit slash use permit. And I'm assuming in the specific standards, we are making that distinction between when you need a zoning permit and a use permit. Hotels or motels located in Corolla with fifty or more rooms are subject to an approved special use permit. The special use permit application shall include a traffic impact analysis prepared by a registered engineer that meets the standards of Section 5.9.3D Traffic Impact Analysis Required and a stormwater plan by a registered engineer that meets the standards of Section 7.3 Stormwater Management. So, it's the same language in a different section of the ordinance. Before, we were in the application and submit a accept and acceptance section in Chapter Two, and here we are in the actual use table and specific standards here. And this building placement, it falls within the Community Compatibility Section of the ordinance, and here it's saying that the added language, buildings subject to these standards shall be set back seventy-five feet from a lot line shared with an existing single-family detached dwelling to the maximum extent practicable. So, it's increasing, Community Compatibility Standards already have some standards where you need to taper down larger development when you get closer to the residences and it has increased setbacks, but this is going even further, saying that seventy-five feet is as close as you can come with any part of a development of this nature.
Jason, what is the current setback?
Fifty.
Fifty, is it fifty?
I think it's fifty. If I can.
Yeah.
I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's no difference in the setbacks for commercial than residential. Ten feet on the side, twenty-five feet in the rear, and that's part of the problem. There, contrary to the UDO's own language about trying to avoid encroachment on residential, there's no difference, and so, and this is to the maximum extent practical, so if you've got a smaller commercial lot, that may, seventy-five feet may not be practical, and so, that's a defined term in the UDO, so this allows for that. But if you're on a big lot, like, say, five acres or more, or you, there's really no excuse for not being able to have a setback of seventy-five feet.
Okay.
The underlying zoning districts in planned unit developments at the beach are oftentimes residential zoning districts, single-family outer banks with an overlay or allocation for commercial use and certain percentage of that planned unit development, and I think that's what he's referring to about the ten-foot setback.
Well, just to be clear, these are countywide proposals, like countywide setbacks. So, while it's particularly sensitive in a place like Corolla, the setback proposal is proposed for the entire county, and the problem is the same, there's no separate bigger setback for commercial from existing single-family homes as a single-family home has to have from each other. So, that's what I'm trying to address.
Well, to be clear, though, in general business, there's a fifteen-foot setback as opposed to ten in a residential zone, so it's slightly larger, but not a whole lot. Yeah.
Is that delineated as to like, we used an example of five acres, I mean, at what point does that seventy-five foot go away if you've got a small commercial lot? I mean.
Well, if it would render your lot unusable because you couldn't meet seventy-five feet.
Right, that's crazy, yeah, because some of them are smaller, I'm so, I mean, I think we just saw something very much like this when they were talking about setbacks on residential lots and trying to move that, and while it might work for your average residential lot, it doesn't work for a residential lot that might be in a cul-de-sac and it's kind of pie-shaped.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's why it went back to the drawing board. I'm wondering if that same situation now is we're visiting it in the commercial world, is that if there's a smaller commercial property, they basically could no longer build on that commercial property.
That's why it says to the maximum extent practicable?
Pardon me?
Because this proposal is seventy-five to the maximum extent practicable, that's a defined term in the UDO.
In other words, you would need to meet the underlying zoning district setbacks at a minimum, but if this seventy-five-foot setback would make you not be able to use your lot, then you would just be asked to set it back as far as you possibly can.
Okay, okay.
And another thing to consider is if you're on a lot that's that small, then your development's probably not going to be quite as large as some others might be anyway, so.
So, on a smaller commercial lot, it could default back to the existing setbacks?
Like I said, if we were reviewing a site plan for something like this and the seventy-five feet was supposed to apply there, but you can see that they can't meet that, then it would just, we would probably ask them to pull it as far from any neighboring residential uses as they possibly could.
To tell you the truth, I'm a little worried about the vagueness of it, you know, unless it delineates it.
Well, this language is used in our ordinance quite often, the maximum extent practical, so we're used to dealing with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I see your concern, but that's generally how the ordinance addresses this sort of situation.
Yeah, and it's just the buildings, so the buildings can be tweaked architecturally to work.
Right.
And this is seventy-five feet from a neighboring residential?
Yeah, only existing.
Single family.
Single-family residence lot line.
Okay, okay.
That's all that applies to.
All the rest of the perimeter, if it doesn't, I guess, gets residential, stays to its existing setbacks, correct?
Say that again.
So, in other words, the original setbacks other than the one that where a commercial is bordering a residential lot?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
So, it's a single-family detached dwelling?
Right, right, okay.
And then this, when it says building is subject to these standards, this is inside the Community Compatibility Standards section, so you have to be subject to that, which is triggered when you have commercial development that is adjoined by residential uses.
All right, any more questions for staff? All right, if the applicant will come forward?
Well, we've still got more.
Here we go, we, I'm sorry, huh?
That's okay.
We kept going, I thought we were there.
We got them. All right. Here, we're still in that same Community Compatibility Section, this was concerning building height, and it says, building shall maintain a maximum height of two stories and thirty feet. If you're within a hundred feet of a lot line shared with an existing single-family detached dwelling. So, instead of the thirty-five feet that it used to be, now you can't have more than two stories and you cannot be taller than thirty feet if you're within that hundred feet of a shared lot line.
And this is countywide?
This is countywide.
Okay.
Yep.
And again, this applies to bordering a single-family residential.
Existing, yeah.
Yep, yep, this is in the Community Compatibility Section of the ordinance, and that's how that's triggered, yep.
And then the footage, is that, that's measured off of, we've had that, I guess, recently, does, was it the median or the mean?
It's a mean roof height.
Yeah.
Of thirty feet instead of thirty-five, yep. There are a lot of land use goals that this request is consistent with. I don't know that I'm going to read through every single one of them, they are in the packet. If you have any questions about any of them, I'd be happy to answer those, but I'm just going to list the applicable land use goals. Land use goal one and two. Land use policy 2.2. Land use goal three. Economic development goal two. Infrastructure and county services goals one and four, as well as transportation goal one, and policies 1.2 through 1.5. The Corolla subarea land use policies 1.1 through 1.6. And from the implementation matrix, we have countywide actions 27 and 28 and 83, and Corolla actions 13 and 32. Also, the Unified Development Ordinance provisions, under the General Purpose and Intent Section, all of A through P could apply, as well as the description sections for multifamily design standards and community compatibility standards as well. There's a lot of information in there, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The staff recommends approval of the request subject to the following suggested consistency statement. The requested text amendment is in conformance with the general purpose and intent of the Unified Development Ordinance and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goals one, two, and three, economic development goal two, infrastructure and services goals one and four, transportation goal one, and implementation actions identified in the matrix, including CC 27, 28, and 83, and Corolla actions 13 and 32. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Jason?
I do, I want to make sure I understand this because I know at the last meeting, the idea of adequate facilities came up, you know, just kind of in general passing, I don't even think it covered anywhere, where it used to be, schools.
And all the others, now it's just schools.
And now it's just schools.
Correct.
So, this text amendment actually allows traffic to come in there, traffic studies to actually be looked at, as opposed, because adequate facilities is very general, and you could argue EMS, you could argue sheriff, and you could argue roads, too, as sewage, drainage, all that. So, this does allow at least something else to come in there to be looked at.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
I want to make clear on that.
That's very well written.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Don and Jenny have been working on that for quite some time.
Jenny deserves a lot of credit for it being well-written because my original proposal, which is part of the packet, was tweaked by Jenny considerably to make it fit better into the statutory language.
She's good at that.
All right, any more questions for Jason? All right, if the applicant will come forward and just state your name and address?
Yes. My name is Don Haller. My local address is 1068 Lighthouse Drive in Corolla. Thank you for considering the amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance that I proposed, and thank you for your public service. This is solely my proposal, it's not on behalf of any other person or organization, but I'm making these proposals to fix some huge holes in the Unified Development Ordinance that prevent the county's elected officials from having the authority and the information needed to assess the impacts of major development projects in Corolla and to provide better balancing of the interests of developers and the existing community. Together with my wife Sue, we've owned a home in Corolla in the Whalehead Development since 1997. We cherish Corolla as a family-friendly beach community. Our children grew up spending their childhood vacations in Corolla with the children of my brother and my wife's brothers and sisters. They are so close that my brother's children, now adults, consider themselves cousins of the children of my wife Susan's siblings even though they're not related at all. I believe, however, that Corolla is at a critical crossroad which could irrevocably alter its character as a desirable destination for groups of families. Unprecedented high-density development is being sought by developers that could irrevocably harm Corolla as a desirable tourist destination for families, but does not trigger a review by its elected officials to assess impacts because the UDO has a huge hole. It only requires a special use permit for certain types of uses without regard for the scale of the projects. Thus, under the UDO, the elected stewards of the county, the Board of Commissioners, require a special use permit for a tiny little miniature golf course in a mixed-use area. But they have no authority to assess potential harmful impacts of a massive hundred-and-seventy-two room hotel that a developer seeks to build at Route 12 and Herring Street in Corolla, adjoining existing single-family homes. Among other risks, the Board of Commissioners cannot assess traffic risks to pedestrian safety because a hotel is just one of many authorized uses of a lot zoned as commercial. It is treated no differently than a tiny seven-room Wild Horse Inn in Corolla, and that just makes no public policy sense. Huge scale plainly matters in its impacts. It is a potential public policy disaster that the elected stewards of the county's welfare have no authority to assess the impacts of high-density developments such as the largest hotel ever proposed in a sensitive location like Corolla. So, my first proposal is to enable the Board of Commissioners to have the authority to review the impacts of a very large development, a very large development project of multiple types in Corolla by amending the UDO to require a special use permit for a commercial, industrial, mixed-use, and/or multifamily development of at least thirty thousand square feet, and those are all the uses that the UDO already has in the community standards, that are subject to the community standards, for developments that adjoin existing single-families, residences. So, the SUP application for such development must include a traffic impact analysis and stormwater retention plan, two problems of critical importance that the Vision 2040 Land Use Plan recognizes Corolla struggles with currently, and I think that's a quote right on page seventeen of the Vision 2040 Plan. The Vision 2040 Land Use Plan even directed the county to amend the UDO to require a traffic impact analysis for uses that will generate a significant increase in vehicle activity in Corolla. It's never been implemented. With this proposed amendment, it will be. I respectfully submit that the Planning Board and the Board of Commissioners should want to have information about large development impacts on issues of major importance in Corolla to enable the best possible decision-making. My second proposal is to require a special use permit for a hotel in Corolla of [inaudible]. My second proposal is to require a special use permit for a hotel in Corolla of 50 rooms or more, and the special use permit application must include a traffic impact analysis and a stormwater retention plan prepared by qualified engineer. A hotel operates 24 hours a day, a very large one will be bringing much more traffic of short-stay visitors during peak summer months, and currently, the county's officials are blind as to the traffic and other impacts of such a large hotel. The proposed hotel at Herring would be by far the largest in the history of Corolla, many times the size of the attractive 42-room Inn at Corolla Light the Commissioner White's father had built. Unlike the 130-room Hampton Inn with its beachfront location at a relatively isolated location that's backed by the Audubon Sanctuary, the Saga Hotel is directly behind the existing Whalehead Residential Development, which share access from Route 12 at Herring Street with a proposed massive 127-unit multifamily complex and retail stores. Herring Street connects to the residential street of Corolla Drive, which runs parallel to Route 12 for three miles, and can be used to bypass Herring Street or reach it by using it as a back way. I and many others in Whalehead fear residential Corolla Drive will be converted to a busy through street on summer weekends, as Google Maps advises visitors to avoid the Route 12 backup at Herring Street that these developments will create by going up Corolla Drive to either reach the hotel, the multifamily unit that they've rented, or destinations further north by driving up Corolla Drive to Shad, which bypasses the Herring Street intersection. Pedestrians, including children, must walk across and along Corolla Drive, which doesn't even have a sidewalk, to go to and from the beach. The safety of those pedestrians should be a matter of critical importance, but the UDO requires no special use permit for hotels, regardless of size, and even the multifamily project, which does require a special use permit, there is no county-required traffic impact analysis. By requiring a special use permit and a traffic impact analysis to be submitted with, with the special use permit application for a large development, a large hotel, the county's elected stewards will have the information needed to assess the traffic and other impacts of the project and make informed judgments. My third proposal is to better balance the interests of the existing community and new commercial development by requiring the commercial structures have a 75-foot setback from a lot line adjoining existing single-family residences to the maximum extent practicable. This flexible standard would apply throughout the county, but is particularly needed in Corolla. Land Use Policy 2.2 currently prohibits poorly-planned commercial encroachment near residential areas. The problem is that this policy is currently just empty lip service, because the UDO setback rules do not require that the commercial structures have significantly further setbacks from existing residences than residences have from each other, which is only 10 feet from the side and 25 feet from the rear. It doesn't make any public policy sense. No Currituck County homeowner should have to endure having a commercial enterprise so close to the residence if it is practicable to have a greater setback. The proposed 172-room hotel is on a lot, a commercial lot, well over five acres, but the back of the hotel, on its submitted sketch plan, is nevertheless, appears to be about the minimum 25 feet from the backyards of the homes in Corolla Drive, the same that would be required for another single-family home. The county's current setback rules allow commercial developers to show little regard for the use and enjoyment of adjoining single-family homes that were there before the commercial development. This proposal goes a modest but important way toward ameliorating that. The new provision is flexible, where smaller commercial lots may mean a 75-foot setback is not practicable. My fourth proposal is to require that commercial buildings not exceed two stories up to 30 feet in height within 100 feet of a lot line shared with an existing single-family residence. Now, this community standard is almost identical to the current UDO provision that requires multifamily buildings to not exceed two stories within 100 feet of a lot line shared with existing family residences. No homeowner should have to endure a large commercial building looming over their yard and home, and existing homeowners in the county deserve at least the same distance from a three-story commercial building as they do from a multifamily building. Now, before I go into more depth on the public policy support for these proposals, I'm, I'm really very gratified and pleased that the Planning Department staff supports all of them. The staff supports them in part because they are, quote, "consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck Vision 2040 Land Use Plan." So turning to some of the public policies that support these proposed amendments, and I will not be going through all of the ones that are listed in the staff report. But the Land Use Plan, right at page 17, I think, identifies, states that, that Corolla continues to struggle with traffic and stormwater management. So these are two major problems in Corolla, recognized already. The Vision 2040 Plan directed the UDO to be amended to require a traffic impact study for uses that will generate a significant increase in vehicle activity at page 104 at CC Act 27. It's never been implemented. Even more specifically, the Vision 2040 Plan CC Act 83 County Policies at page 126 directs the county to establish a threshold and requirement for traffic impact analysis for uses that will generate a significant increase in traffic volumes, and carefully consider the impacts of proposed developments when making land use decisions. This policy directive has not been implemented. Even for projects that currently require a special use permit, such as multifamily, no traffic impact analysis required by the county and its elected stewards are blind as to the traffic impacts. Unless the UDO requires a special use permit for large-scale, high-density projects of multiple types, like the largest hotel in the history of Corolla, the county's elected officials will lack authority and information to determine the impacts of those projects, and will be powerless to do anything about them. By requiring a special use permit and a traffic impact analysis and stormwater retention engineering plan to be submitted with the application for these multiple types of developments that are 30,000 square feet and hotels of 50, 30,000 square feet or more, and hotels of 50 or more rooms, the elected stewards of the county's welfare will be able to make informed judgments about those impacts and have the authority to take actions they deem appropriate. Importantly, the special use permit proceeding, the community will have an opportunity to present experts to inform commissioners about those impacts. I chose the 30,000-square-foot threshold to match the threshold the UDO has for requiring a traffic impact analysis for shopping centers. Those could be located anywhere in the county near a four-lane highway. Yet Corolla's main road, as you know, is a two-lane Route 12. So 30,000 square feet is a pretty conservative threshold to require a special use permit with impact assessments. The shopping center is the only use that I've found that requires a traffic impact analysis and has specific standards at 5.9.3D, and they are adopted by reference in the proposal. So those standards include a requirement of the study to be based on peak traffic periods and be conducted by a professional engineer. This will enable a qualified and professional assessment of whether proposed developments at Herring and Corolla Drive will turn residential Corolla Drive into a through street dangerous to beach-going pedestrians, and change in the quiet neighborhood character of the street by visitors seeking to avoid a backup on Route 12 at the Herring intersection. It may be contended that the North Carolina Department of Transportation Review of Developments will address any traffic issues, but they, that review does not start until a project is approved for construction by the county, so it's really not timely. Its focus will be on the traffic flow at the state road access point of the development, which will be Herring, the Herring intersection, providing access to both the hotel and the 127 multifamily complex. Now, it may require the builder to add length to the turn lanes, it may add a light that the builder has to pay for, but it's not going to be considering whether this project is going to end up creating backups to turn Corolla Drive into a dangerous through street. And it's up to the county to look out for the welfare of the community before a construction project is approved, which can do with a special use permit requirement and the requirement to submit a traffic impact analysis with the application. Requiring a stormwater retention plan by a qualified professional with, with the SUP application is important to ensure that, again, that the county's elected officials can assess it, and the community has an opportunity to present its own assessment. At the November 6th Board of Commissioners meeting, Chairman White made a comment that issues regarding this proposed multifamily development in Corolla would be reviewed when the major site plan was completed and came back to the BOC for review. But once a special use permit is approved by the BOC, it does not come back to the elected Board of Commissioners for review. It's reviewed by the county planning staff. So that also means there is no public opportunity for review, I'm sorry, no, no opportunity for the public community to review it and present its own assessment. A valuable example of importance of making a traffic impact analysis and a stormwater retention plan part of a special use permit application was a special use permit proceeding in Manio. There, a developer had proposed a retail commercial development at an intersection that already served a residential development, and the town council required a traffic impact analysis and stormwater plan engineered to be submitted as part of the special use permit approval process with public hearings. At, at that hearing, the community demonstrated the developer's stormwater plan did not meet Manio's requirements, though it met the state's, and that the developer's traffic impact analysis had erroneous measurements and is unreliable in other respects. You can actually watch those proceedings on YouTube if you're willing to sit through the ads. So, and thank you for not having your proceedings posted on YouTube with advertisements. So my proposed amendments will ensure that a Corolla major development impact issues, including traffic and stormwater, that the Vision 2040 Plan identified as critical, are addressed in a public hearing before the elected stewards of the county's welfare and subject to the scrutiny of the affected community. Because this only applies to large-scale projects, it only imposes additional costs on projects that necessarily have large-scale budgets. The status quo is that the elected stewards of the county's welfare are blind and helpless to address large-scale Corolla projects that do not fall into certain very limited types of use, and they're even blind to the traffic impacts of projects that do currently require a special use permit. So I urge you to join with the Planning Department staff to recommend that the Board of Commissioners give itself the tools to enable informed and effective development public policy decisions. Now, just a few more comments regarding the countywide proposal to require the commercial buildings have a 75-foot setback to the maximum extent practical. It gives substance to the currently empty 2040 Vision Plan Policy 2.2 to prohibit commercial encroachment near residential areas. Moreover, the UDO itself's Community Compatibility Standards provides at Section 5.10B that one in 10 of the standards is to protect the character of existing single-family detached development from negative impacts resulting from more intense and incompatible adjacent forms of development. I submit that that codified policy is largely meaningless if, as currently permitted, a massive commercial complex, like 172-room hotel, on a parcel of over five acres, can be placed just 25 feet from the rear lot line of existing family residences as their sketch plan currently shows. Where a commercial lot developer knows the lot and joins existing homes, there should be a much greater setback than is currently provided by the setback rules that are largely the same for residential and commercial development. So the proviso to the maximum extent possible provides the flexibility for smaller commercial parcels, and has a specific defined meaning under the UDO, which is that, as the staff report noted, "No feasible or practical alternative exists as determined by the county, and all possible efforts to comply with the standards of regulation to minimize potential harmful impacts have been undertaken by the applicant. Economic considerations may be taken into account, but shall not be the overriding factor in determining maximum extent practicable." Adoption of the 75-foot community standards commercial building setback from a single-family residence to the maximum extent practical will provide some substance to the county's own codified policy. And I want to add one more policy fairness point in support of the setback proposal, and for that matter, for the special use permit requirement. The commercial lot that adjoins Corolla Drive residences was originally zoned as residential. As recently as 2001, a site plan, sketch site plan, was submitted by the then-owner to build single-family residences in that parcel. Corolla Drive homes were largely built in the 1990s. So there are current homeowners, including full-time residents, behind this proposed hotel who bought their home when they thought that the lot behind them was going to remain residential, as it was zoned then. So I don't know if the county has ever done this in any other location in the county, or ever will do this with any other parcels, but the county's own dramatic zoning changes had further support requiring developers to provide some reasonable setback protection for existing single-family homes, and to have a special use permit hearing to consider whether they're adversely affecting adjoining landowners. So finally, the height restriction I proposed for commercial structures adjoining single, existing single-family homes almost exactly matches the existing restriction for multifamily structures. It was particularly shocking to see a sketch plan for the three-story hotel at Herring Street, just 25 feet from the rear lot lines of existing single-family residences. So this, again, gives some substance to the Land Use Policy 2.2, preventing commercial encroachment near residential areas, and the codified UDO Community Standards stated purpose to protect single-family detached development from negative impacts resulting from intense and incompatible adjacent forms of development. It is not unusual, I submit, that commercial buildings, like hotels, could have floodlights and security cameras at the building. And by the way, they propose a pool at the back, when the existing community standards require that exterior features, like even vending machines, should be placed away from existing single-family residences. And yet, there's a pool, and for a resort hotel, I imagine there would be a lot of noise, maybe loud music played all the hours the pool's in operation, and floodlights for security that might be on all night, right up against single-family homes. So I want to thank you for your attention and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I just want to say, you know, I appreciate your clarification and how well you articulated it. It brought a lot of clarity to, to reading through this. It helped quite a bit. Thank you. Thanks for your reference as well.
Thank you. I have a copy of the.
I'd love a copy of that.
Okay. I have unfortunately only three, but I will hand them out.
Hey, Jason, is that in here already?
Was that included in the packet?
No. I put a public, if you've not had a chance to read it, I submitted a public policy memo that does state some of these points that I've just made. That was with the original application in February. This is a different public policy argument presentation. But I urge you to read both the original, that I submitted with the application that's in the packet, and this one, which is not in the packet, that I just presented. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Haller?
No, I, I do want to second what Tom said on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Answers a lot of concerns and very well put together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
All right. Any discussion between board members? All right. At this time, I'm going to open the floor for a motion.
I can't read it. I have my glasses on.
Yeah. Give me a second.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, move to approve PB 2410, Donald B. Haller, text amendment, because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan in the UDO, including Land Use Goals 1, 2, and 3, Economic Development Goals 2, Infrastructure and Service Goals 1 and 4, Transportation Goal 1, and Implementation Actions CC-ACT-27, 28, and 83, and COR-ACT-13 and 32.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Motion passes. Before we move on to the final, is everybody okay? Anybody need a break?
Roll on.
Okay. Rolling on.
Let it roll on.
Okay. Item number four, Proposed Amendments to the Rules of Procedure. The following amendments to the Rules of Procedure are presented for a vote to be held at the next, this is what confused me, at the next regular board meeting. Update the Governing, Governing North Carolina General Statute 160D, is that 160 or 160D? It's 160D-301, and update the maximum appointed successive terms for board members to three At this time, we'll hear from staff. At this time, we'll hear from staff.
That's it.
That's it.
I think you're just supposed to acknowledge that you'll be voting on those changes at the end.
I like that. All right. So we don't even vote on it, do we?
Not today.
Not today.
No discussion?
No discussion.
Just acknowledgement.
You can discuss it if you want.
Yeah. All right. But we can discuss it next time and vote on it next time. Okay. All right. Okay, any announcements? Any Mister?
I don't have any.
Penny Cherie, any announcements? All right, hearing no announcements, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Meeting adjourned.